Good evening and welcome to the December 5th meeting of the regular meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and West Sacramento Redevelopment Successor Agency and the West Sacramento Financing Authority. We will begin tonight, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if I were to please stand, I'll ask Dr. Art Pimentel, our good friend and dean of the West Sac -- West Sac City College campus, please lead us in the pledge.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Art. Welcome, everybody. First of all, we did -- the council did meet tonight in closed session. I'll ask the city attorney, please, update everybody on the actions.
Thank you. The council met in closed session to confer with their real property negotiator concerning the property identified in the agenda. They also met with their legal counsel to discuss an October 10th, 2018, letter from Scott Rafferty. No action was taken in either matter.
Thank you, Jeff. So we'll continue on with the meeting. Before we begin, I'll ask everyone wishing to address the council, they should fill out a yellow Speaker's Request Form that will run the side table, to please try to fill those out and have those turned in to the city clerk. Prior to the end of the staff presentation, she'll hand those to me, and if anybody wishes to speak, I will take those cards as they're presented to me, no particular order. In other words, I'd ask that during those who wish to speak, we do have three-minute timeframes that allow everybody time to speak and address the council. In addition, I'd ask anybody that's in the audience to not provide any necessary applause, cheers, boos, whatever, just try to refrain. We try to have a civil discourse here in the council, so please give everybody the opportunity to speak, and that would be appreciated. So we'll continue on with today's agenda. First up is the presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdictions of the council. Do we have any requests to speak? We do not? Okay. So I'll ask anybody in the public, it doesn't look like anybody wishes to speak on that. So we'll move on to item 1B, which is council communications. Do any council members have any assignments? Yes, council member Sandeep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. The West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency met on December 15th, and we acted to accept the city's flood and luffie contributions, fund contributions, to support the WASAFKA Bridgeway Drain Improvement Project. And we authorized a contract for federal water consulting to support and lobby for our WASAFKA levy improvement program. And we also authorized several contract amendments related to the Southport Levy Improvement Project. We also heard the updates, and we also received a monthly update on our finances. Then, I think importantly, subsequent to the meeting, we've had, as those of you that live here in West Sacramento and the region, we've had quite a bit of rain, and there are issues with some off-road vehicles and motorcycles tearing up and down the new levees. This is really dangerous, and so there's work underway to better secure and monitor access to the levees. Please do not do this if you are, and please report this if you see it. It would be very helpful. Some other erosion from the rain has been observed, but it is pretty superficial and is also being attended to. Thank you. We're really proud of the project, and we want to keep it intact, of course, for our safety. And the Port Commission met earlier tonight, and we approved an exclusive negotiating agreement with TC, NoCal Development Incorporated, for some Seaway International Trade Center property, and we authorized a purchase of a property for the port adjacent to the port. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On November 14th, 2018, I met with the Board of Directors with Regional Sanitation Board. One of the items that we spent a lot of time with on was the Sims Ranch and Nicholas Dairy Repurposing Project, which was approved for $2.5 million for improving that area. And largely, the presentation we received had to do with how we can use that facility to educate kids in our community about the dairy and other opportunities to learn things like Future Farmers of America-like opportunities. Now, there was a pilot that was proposed for the first two years that would reach out to Outgrow Unified School students. I raised the issue of why don't we expand it to kids in the Yolo County, including Washington Unified, and that seemed to get some traction. So as of earlier this week, I received a message from our representative at Regional Sanitation who wants to connect with our superintendent. So hopefully, there'll be discussions underway. I see trustee Kobe Fasati in the back, and trustee Sarah Kirby Gonzalez, and we have -- oh, and Jackie Wong, and fantastic, I see lots of -- thank you, and our new --
Preston.
Preston, exactly. Thank you so much for being here and representing. I know we're going to have an opportunity to hear from you later. But it's wonderful to see such committed school representatives in our community, and I know that we can take an opportunity like this and make sure that kids that don't have adequate opportunities to explore these types of experiences will definitely benefit. So what they needed from us was just an identification of particular students or particular schools, so hopefully, we can continue that conversation. And in another short notice, I did speak with the coordinator for Downtown Streets Team and was notified that, in addition to T. Solomon, who was employed recently by Dollar Tree, and Barbara, who was employed by Rayleigh's. And just for context, the Downtown Streets Team is a program that we brought in as a pilot, our city council, a few months ago. And we, if you haven't noticed already, we have a group of team members who are around our streets beautifying the community. It was notified today that we had Matt R., who just also became employed at Rayleigh's today. So I think it's fantastic to see people in our community making the best of this experience and hopefully exploring the continuum of opportunities ahead to get themselves employed and to get out of the routine of otherwise misfortune. Thank you, Mr. Protem.
Thank you. I have one item to report. Back on Monday, November 26th, I've been honored to be -- have been appointed to the Embarass Commission on Climate Change. We had our first meeting of that commission on Monday, the 26th, and I was very honored to be on the commission along with several leaders throughout the community. The other elected official on that commission is council member Steve Hansen from Sacramento. But it was a very robust, three-hour meeting, a very sobering meeting. We heard from Dr. Ben Holton from UC Davis, who presented findings he had on the current state of climate change and how it's affecting our region, our air quality, our health. And in the wake of the Butte County Camp Fire, and in the wake of the national report that came out on climate change, that came out just the weekend before, it was a timely meeting. And it was very, while it was very sobering to get the news about where we are on climate change, and it was very optimistic in the fact that several business leaders, leaders from the education community, Dr. Robert Nelson from Sac State, we had members of the business community, including our West Sac headquarter, or the head of our West Sac headquarter, Rayleigh's Groceries was there, Mike Teal, and others from throughout the community took part. It was optimistic because this commission has come together to try to drive directions for both the city of Sacramento and West Sacramento as a combined effort to do what we can to address climate change within our cities. There will be, first of all, there were presentations by both our cities on what we're doing to date, the city of Sacramento presented, as well as our staff. Katie Ansey and David Tilly presented on behalf of our staff of all the great things we are already doing in this community, including the things we're doing in the mobility space, the things we're doing in our land use planning, and the way we're building transit-oriented development and infill development. It was hopeful in that regard that we're on our way, but there's a lot of work to do. The commission will be meeting throughout next year. There are subcommittees, technical advisory committees, on the built environment and on mobility that will be also forming and meeting over the next few months. They will be focusing on those two areas where they will be providing recommendations back to the commission, who will then make some decisions around formal recommendations to both cities as a way to better enhance our own efforts, either through general planning, through our ordinances, or through other ways that we can address climate change. But again, very hopeful in the fact that we are all in the room together, and a lot of, again, a lot of community leaders that are coming together to address this. I want to thank Mayor Steinberg, who started this, as well as Merrick Baldwin, who couldn't be here tonight, who signed up along with him and take it as a joint city effort. Hopefully, that will start to permeate to the other communities throughout the region as we have to -- this is a global issue, and we're choosing to address it locally, and I think that's all we can do. Can we want to control what we can control, so I commend both of them on taking action on this. So as this continues, I will continue to keep the council and the public informed of our progress. So that's all I have to report tonight. Does this say anything else, council? We'll move on to item 1C, which are council appointments, reappointments to boards and commissions. We have no suggestions tonight for boards and commissions, but I will inform the public that the council looks like they have some maggy eyes and tired red eyes. We received several hundred, I want to say, applications from the public to serve on boards and commissions in the city. I think a lot of community members heeded the call to try to serve their city in some way or capacity, and I applaud you for, all of you who, out in the millions of viewers watching tonight, that chose to turn in their applications for it. We really appreciate everyone stepping forward. That process will be continuing. We're all looking at applications, the mayor's looking at applications, and I think we'll be likely making, city clerk making recommendations for that at the 19th meeting. Okay. So again, not, I want everybody in the public to know who've turned in their applications for those, thank you, and we really appreciate your stepping up to try to serve the community. So with that, we'll move on to the regular agenda, and we have three presentations tonight. So we'll start with the first one, which is a presentation by Sacramento City College President Michael Gutierrez on the ongoing partnership with the city and the success of the West Sacramento College Promise. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Wadesma, members of the city council. On behalf of the Los Rios Community College District, specifically Sacramento City College and the Sacramento City College West Sacramento Center, I want to extend a big thank you for your commitment and partnership regarding the West Sacramento Promise. And I want to really commend the mayor, the city council, and the staff and community members for providing a holistic vision for education and employment for the city of Sacramento, because with this home run initiative, our young people at preschool age can have the expectation that they can go to college, that they don't have to worry about paying for college, and it is also connected with future employment here in the city of West Sacramento. I also want to thank you for your financial commitment to improving the area around the West Sacramento Center, in particular, providing a space parking area for our students. And I can tell you that that is something that makes our students feel safe, and it is being widely used. And in connection with that, I want to put on your radar that we would like to begin discussion on Phase Two of the West Sacramento Center. And I think we can all agree that Phase One has been arousing success, right? The existing facilities are being widely used by community members, but it is time to begin discussions on Phase Two. Thank you for the opportunity, and have a good evening, good meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. And before you sit down, I want to say, first of all, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you and Dr. Pimentel for all your partnership. I'm going to start with your last thing first, and that's Phase Two. I know from, my daughter has attended classes at the campus across the street, and no, so I hear firsthand, it's being widely used there. A lot of students are going to that campus and appreciate that campus very much, and welcome the opportunity to have that conversation about what Phase Two looks like. Your leadership and the leadership of, I'm sorry, your art to me, not Dr. Pimentel yet.
We call him Artie.
It is really turned, it has really made a really sparkling light on West Capital as a beacon where young students and other students come and have access to the city college. So thank you very much for your leadership, and we look forward to that conversation. And thank you for your partnership on our home run initiative and on the college promise. I think that more so is a testament to the success that you've, by having the enrollment you've had, and being able to give these kids an opportunity, like you said, not to worry about college as an impediment, getting rid of any impediments in going to college and pursuing a career, a college career or other career. I think that is hugely important, that consistency in the leadership, your presence there, the energy that comes from the college, along with the college promises, made it very successful. So just want to say thank you to you both. We look forward to continuing this. I want to thank also, before you sit down, the folks in the room around, because this community voted for Measure E, and Measure E has funded that. So the success you're feeling today is a direct result of their passage of Measure E back in 2016, and I'm so glad that they're seeing actually going to use and having these conversations about it's not only helping the kids today, now we're talking about expanding to get more students through there tomorrow. So thank you very much on all three fronts. And I didn't even address parking, but I think that's a good thing too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I have one more thing. On my wall in my children's bedroom, there's a shirt that says "Class of 2030." I want to commend you for the Kinder to College program that you put on. If those of you in the audience aren't familiar or at home watching TV tonight, our community college hosts, along with our Washington Unified School District and other partners, an opportunity for young kindergarten students to participate in a day of college. And I had a great fortune of being at two of them to see the progress and the kids and their wide eyes. And I think it's Justine Jimenez, I think, is the one that person who told me that when my son came into contact with her, the next day, he said he was leaving the learning ladder, and she said, "Oh, really? Why?" And he said, "'Cause I'm going to college." So thank you for planting that seed early and for all the efforts both you and Dr. Pimentel have engaged in to engage our youth.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Sandeep.
Thank you for being here with us tonight, President. The staff report we got, the background on the presentation provided a lot of data and statistics, and to me, everything looks like it's trending in a really positive direction, so I can just imagine us continuing and growing, and I really look forward to that partnership. I think a lot of folks here know that I was at Los Rios Community College District for a number of years, and it's, I'm really proud that we have the West Sac Center here as part of Sacramento City College. So thank you for all of your work, thank you for helping make these collaborations. I know it is a big lift between our teams and yours, but we figured it out, and I think it's really wonderful. So thank you.
Well, and I want to say that many of us spend our entire careers waiting for an opportunity to do something like this, and this is truly a special partnership. And to forecast what could happen 10 or 12 years from now, and to see those kindergartners graduating in 2030, and the city reaping the benefits of those young people working here, and also not having to worry that there will be a brain drain, that they're going elsewhere, is something that we could all be very proud of.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item three, presentation by the Future Ready Project of the West Sacramento Foundation on the second base programs of the West Sacramento Home Run.
Councilmember.
And our friend Chris Warden, welcome.
Thank you. It's great to be here. Councilmembers, I wanted to let you know that we had our second successful summer. Our young men and women, many of whom are here today, made valuable contributions to their employers, whether that was in troubleshooting computers, building computers, video production, maintenance, rolling out a new menu for a restaurant, using GIS and engineering, all hands-on tasks and just a few of these. We even had three interns who were hired after the end of their summer, which I think speaks to the level of their growth. Because of all of you, 33 young people built or strengthened both technical and soft skills that they didn't have before. They learned relationship building, and they learned how to showcase what they learned in the job market. But what I want to focus on tonight is what the voters of West Sacramento and you all helped us coalesce through your investment in youth. And I want to direct the comments to council, but also to our interns, because I always want them to know who the community is that is behind the scenes supporting them, who's invested in them. So if this sounds a little bit like an Oscar speech, it's just because I'm trying to not get played off. So there are a lot of people who've contributed. First of all, I want you all to know that the reason you were able to get positions in large part is because of the votes of the folks that sit up in front of you, they helped pay for the wages, so that's major, right? And the parts that we couldn't get covered, we had people step up. So we were supported by the generosity of AT&amp;T. Tim Ray, the regional vice president of AT&amp;T, if you can hold your hand up, Tim, is here tonight. They, he also offered to generously have the students come out and check out the AT&amp;T tech, technology, 5G's on the way, people, you know, we need to know. So that's how much you guys rate, you got a senior vice president here tonight to check you out. We also wanted to thank another great corporate citizen, Clark Pacific, for their support. Thomas Ketrone is here tonight from Clark Pacific, there we are. So I want to make sure they get acknowledged. Now, another thing you young people need to know, you can get your money right, but you still got to put all the pieces together, you got to have a lot of partners. And to change the trajectory of life, we need an employer to say yes, but you also need a mentor supervisor who's going to provide the hand-to-hand, the day-to-day hand-holding. So we're grateful to both of those folks, sometimes it was the same person, and we have some of those folks here tonight. So from the Health Education Council, I have Gina Roberson, and also Kristy Barnes, so if you guys can, when I call your names, yeah, like if you guys can raise your hand, I want to make sure everybody knows who you are. We have Chris White, who did double duty from the California Fuel Cell Partnership and Frontier Energy, I think she's, yep. We have Michael Ackley Grady, who is a mentor supervisor from the Center for Land-Based Learning. We have Lenise Maury from Lenise's Cafe. And then we have Rich Ochoa from Wallace Cool and Associates. I want to give them special recognition, because this is the third year, they were actually involved in our incipient year when we were just a thought, I think, and so Rich has been part of that for all three years, so he deserves special appreciation. Then behind the scenes, you have a ton of moving parts that we, and we couldn't ask for better partners in this effort. The Washington Unified School District trustees are invested, they have all taken time out to meet with me and to give guidance. They and Superintendent Luna have been champs, anything we've needed, they've provided. Anytime we've had an event, they're there. Anytime there are young people who are engaged, they're there. We have with us tonight Sarah Kirby Gonzalez, Jackie Wong, Kobe Fasati, and Preston Jackson. So I want to make sure that you can see their support as well. More personally, I want to talk about Carrie Kerwitz, who's the vice president, or vice, not president, she probably elect that promotion. Vice principal over the Bright Center, she's done more in the trenches than anybody. She's definitely who you want in your foxhole. And the director of the Bright Center, Renee Collins, is equally committed to helping us work through all the programmatic aspects to make sure we get it right. We have, are also blessed to have exceptional career technical education instructors, all of whom have welcomed me into their inner circles warmly. Sometimes, you know, people that are outside the camp get blowback for being kind of the interlopers. So if that's ever been the sentiment, I want to give kudos to these folks, because I've never felt that. I've always felt warmly welcome, and in addition to teaching just the career technical aspects that they do on a daily basis, they've committed to helping our kids get career-ready. So they do soft skills training, they help them on resumes, they help them do cover letters, they help them with their application process. The dedication and devotion is really amazing to me. Tonight, we have with us Siddika Yusufi, who teaches engineering. Yeah, like you feel free to applaud at any point in this. Asha Warrior, who teaches computer science. Cheryl Sutton, who teaches culinary arts. And Jennifer McAllister, who teaches ag science and farm to fork. And then lastly, we have our critical community partners represented. We have Denise Seals with the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce. They've been instrumental in helping our employment recruitment efforts. They let me use their office. Their members have offered to help get our youth ready, so we could not be where we're at without their help. Denise also volunteers her time and gives guidance through service on the Future Ready Board. She's my yogi, not literally, because I haven't taken any of her classes, but pretty much in every way. And I also want to thank our Future Ready Board member, Brian Miller, who is here tonight. So he has been an indispensable member for our board, he offers tactical guidance, and he's a sounding board for our ideas. And then I want to get back to Chris White, who we've already acknowledged, but she's here in two roles. She's also the chair of the West Sacramento Foundation, without them, we couldn't have existed, they've been our administrative guide star from the beginning. So as you can see, there are a lot of people that are part of this effort that are all here for you. And that gets us to Future Ready Class Two. Can I hear it for everybody? Future Ready Class Two? Thank you. When I call your name, if you could please stand up, that would be awesome. Christian Balabagosa. Tatiana Blanco. Yeah, if you can stay standing. Thank you. You're not getting off light. Destiny Cardenas. Miguel Chavez. Elian Diaz. Jose Garcia. Charisma Hernandez. Daniel Jensen. Dylan Patel. Jason Perez. Avi Varden. Did I miss anybody? Okay, awesome. These are fine representatives from Future Ready Class Two. If we can give them another round of applause, that'd be great. And then, if there are any present parents for some of the folks who are in our And then, if there are any present parents for some of the folks who are in our Future Ready Class 2, would you all stand? Hope you guys are always grateful for their support, too. So, this is a huge community of support that you have here. So, I want you guys to take that to heart. And if you guys don't mind, can we do a photo? They'd love to get.
Absolutely.
Okay, can I ask all of, anybody, if I've said your name tonight, we're going to jam into the biggest photo to show people what the West Sacramento community does for its youth.
So, yes, if everybody could come up to the front, and we'll line up right in front of here, and take a quick photo.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we get this wide?
This is kind of a little way.
Make sure we get everybody.
Forty-five, fifty-eight.
Yeah, so we're looking straight ahead.
Okay, we're looking at me? One, two, three. Couple more. One, two, three. Perfect, beautiful. All right. Good. So, Chris, I'm sorry, we went down. That's okay. I just want to say thank you to you all. You thanked.
I forgot the best part. You guys, come back.
No, that's okay.
I forgot the best part. I'm sorry.
So, first of all, before you all leave, and it's okay that you leave right after this, but thank you all for all your work, Class 2. Congratulations to you. It's great that we got, this is our second time, obviously, we had a presentation. And the amount of the community support, Chris had it right. There's a huge amount of community support that makes this happen. And I hope you recognize that tonight. But it really is about you, and I hope you took these opportunities. A lot of employers gave their time. A lot of teachers gave their time. A lot of other folks around the community gave their time. So, hopefully, use this opportunity and are able to leverage that going forward into your, the rest of your high school career, your college career, whatever it is. That's what it's all about for us. That's why the whole community is behind you and want to make these programs happen. So, thank you all very much, and great to have you here. And thank you, Chris, for all your work. So, Jesse, don't be offended when everybody leaves when you come up. It happens every time. But our next presentation is from our Yolo County Assessor Clerk Recorder of Elections on the Youth Empowerment Summit, Jesse Salinas.
Good evening, Mayor Protemla Desma and Councilmember Sandin Orozco. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Yes, I'm a little disappointed. I was hoping I would have that large audience staying here to watch this, but it didn't quite work out this time. But hopefully, some of them will be involved with this in the future, right? So, I want to have a chance to say, again, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening and share with you a little bit about the Youth Empowerment Summit. And I know two of you were there at the summit, and hopefully, we'll have a chance to share a little bit about your experiences and having been there. So, I'd like to be able to draw your attention to, I have a little slide deck for you, to share with you a little bit about the summit. And I, just to see, I don't know if Debbie Clifford, or Gigi Gilbert, or Sharon have showed up by chance. There you go. We have some folks that are here from some of our partners here, which is great. So, I wanted to thank them for coming and being here. And others may pop in at this last minute now that everybody's gone out of the door. So, I want to thank you for being here. Thank you for being here as part of this presentation as well. So, if I'd like, if I could, share with you the Youth Empowerment Summit. And it's an opportunity for us to say yes to leadership and civic engagement. And you can see that little, that logo that we have up there. Actually, that logo was designed by a student. There were a couple of logos that were presented at the summit. And one of the things the students had the opportunity to do is to actually vote on what that logo would be for the following year. And that is the design that the students selected, which was neat. It was an actual ballot, and they had to select and determine that. As again, see democracy in action. So, I'm going to share with you a couple of things. First of all, what is the purpose? It is to encourage, again, youth to say yes to leadership, and to really engage them about civic engagement and voting. And one of the things that, the reason this has come full circle is, back in 2016, as you, the three of you know, I was put into office and sworn in in 2016. And I started to observe what was happening in the election process. And of course, what we've all recognized is young folks were not participating at the level other age groups were, especially that 18 to, some will say 18 to 24. I will argue it's actually the 18 to 30-year-olds. They're just not participating at the levels they should be. And starting to look at why that is, because if you looked at the data, what it started to show is that they get excited over a presidential. And then when the gubernatorial happens, it's a tremendous drop-off. And historically, you will see that. There's just this big drop-off. And so, reflecting upon that, we realized one of the things that needed to be done is to educate our youth about the importance of not just a presidential election, but the off-election cycle years in terms of the gubernatorial. And part of it is, there's a lack of understanding of how important the decisions are that are being made at the local level. What all you are doing here, I mean, tonight is a perfect example. You are transforming communities with decisions that you're making by where you're putting the resources to invest in the communities. And most of, to be frank, most of society doesn't truly understand the importance of that, and what the impact that it can be. And of course, the importance of voting and participating in that election process, and to understand what locals are doing and the important decisions they're making at the local government level. So, this was an opportunity for us to do that and start to really engage the community students. So, you'll see that voting is their superpower. So, we had a nice design that came up. And the idea of the theme was to talk about it, there being their superpower. You know, their superpowers is, they're like superheroes. And if they participate in the election process, that is their superpower. One of the things we talked about is the importance of bringing various members of the community together. And I just wanted to share with you that this is the collaborative that we're starting to build on this. And it's, a few have been added, you know, since we started it in last, for last March. The two additions are the Assets Group and Yolo County Library. But you can see, it's a very comprehensive group. And it's, what's nice about it is, it really is the full throttle of community coming together in a broad scope to be able to help support what students are doing. And that's exciting. So, we have support from UC Davis, the Community College, Friday Night Live, the libraries, the Yolo County Office of Ed, and really, just a broad spectrum of support that we're seeing, which is exciting. So, and that's an example of all the logos and support. So, you can see, it's very comprehensive. So, what is the Youth Empowerment Summit? So, it took place in March of 24th of 2018. And what, it was at the Community College. And we filled up that room in the back, if you, if you recall. It was, it was, well, not quite the capacity. We can fill in more, which I'll talk about a little bit more moving forward. But what we had is, we had 74 students in attendance throughout the county. And you should know, West Sacramento probably had about a third of those kids, probably a little bit more than a third. We calculated about 29 kids from West Sacramento participated in this. So, that's pretty impressive. We had 11 students that we preregistered. We started to educate students on 16 and 17-year-olds, how they can actually preregister. And so, we preregistered some students. There were five students that were of age that we actually registered to vote. Again, we're trying to emphasize the importance of registering and voting. One of the things that was important when the kids first got there is, we fed them breakfast. And one of the things we did is, we gave them a ballot. And we said, "Guess what? You're going to vote on what you're going to have for lunch." And they kind of looked at us funny. And we said, "No," and the ballot was a designed ballot that looked like an official ballot. And so, what we did is, we set it up like a primary. We said, "You have four vendors. Pick the top two. And you can identify what flavors. You want pepperoni, you want combination, vegetarian, all cheese?" And using that model, they picked the top two and what their flavors were. And actually, we got that data, and we processed it late morning, and we went and ordered their pizza. Because we wanted an outcome for them, that they actually had to literally eat what they voted on. And so, we wanted something that they could relate to, saying, "Hey, there's consequences to your vote."
Did they have like little lawn signs already set up for pepperoni? Vote pepperoni?
The next level is to let them caucus, right? So, you now have 10 minutes to go out and start caucusing for your votes and your pizzas. So, one of the neat things about it is that students really enjoyed, because as we started, the electives, and we had electives that came to join us. And that, and let me give you an idea. We had 22 local county officials that came in. And Councilwoman Sandin and Orozco both were there, and we had 22. We're talking county, school boards, representation, city council representation. Every community had representation, which was amazing. And in fact, you know, when we think about it, in talking to the students afterwards, one of their favorite times is when you came to lunch, because we asked the elected officials, "Show up at lunch, break bread with these kids, and just chat with them." You know, break the ice. The kids loved it. You should know, they loved being able, they were a little nervous in the beginning. But then, being able to sit down and actually have lunch and talk, have pizza, and just relax, transformed them. They just said, it was just, we got to know they were real people. And that set the stage for a discussion we had, which was, we allowed the students to identify four policy areas that they would talk about. And the policy areas, and these are the ones that the students came up with, was safety, number one, human rights was another. Another was environmental, and the other was educational. And so, what we did is, we allowed the students to talk about these policy issues with elected officials. And it was a great dialogue. I mean, just seeing the dialogue that was taking place. And we did a little bit of speed dating. We said 15 minutes on this topic. And then after 15 minutes, the electors moved to another table. So, they got to meet different students. And the students got the opportunity to meet different elected officials from different communities. And actually, what, one of the things that was fun, at the end, we actually moved you one more time. And if you recall, we told you it's bonus round. You can talk about any topic you want. And the nice thing about that is, in hearing the students afterwards, they said, "You know, being able to talk about real issues and having them take notes, listen, I realize they really care." And to hear these young folks say that is powerful. And one example had to do here in West Sacramento. A group was sitting there talking to Supervisor Jim Prevenza. And they were talking about how on campus, it was a potential active-shooter situation, and they didn't know how to handle it. And they were scared, because that one teacher wasn't sure. And so, Jim walked over and found Norma Akala, who was on the school board, and said, "Norma, you need to hear this." And Norma said, "What happened?" And she went over there and heard these kids. And these kids got to have a direct dialogue with a school board member about this topic. And of course, the follow-up is that she did talk to the superintendent. And we realized after that, that was because it was a substitute, and that they needed to work on their policies and procedures and improve that moving forward. But that was an example of kids being able to share directly with an elected official about something that was real to them, and that we had elected officials doing something about it. And so, there's other stories that other students had a chance to share. And we've got a filming that actually, today, we did a recording with some other students to ask about that experience. And they have more to share. So, we're in the process of preparing that. So, there's wonderful things that are on the horizon. And I wanted to share with you on just how positive and well-received. But, you know, those of you who, to know who I am, and these are some nice pictures to give you a sense of the folks. And you'll see a couple of people there you recognize, I'm sure, on that photo up there. But, you know, these were some of the dialogues and conversations we had with the kids. But one of the things that you'll, those of you who know me, I'd like to know that I'm, you know, we're moving the needle. It's not just, does it feel good? But are we making a difference? Are people any better off by what we're trying to do? So, what we did is, we conducted what was called a pre and post survey. So, when students first arrived, we asked them nine questions. I'm not going to go through all nine. I'm going to highlight three key questions that I think really capture the essence of what we wanted to get out of this summit. So, I'm going to share with you some pre and post data. The blue bars are going to indicate the pre-survey results. And the gold will indicate the post-survey results at the end of the day, when the students looked. So, we asked them a question. "I understand how local government functions and the role of elected officials." 51% either said they agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. Afterwards, 98% said they either agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. That's pretty significant. That is very significant.
Really significant.
Next question. "I feel comfortable contacting and talking to elected officials about community issues." 39% said they agreed or strongly agreed before the summit. 93% said that, they agreed or strongly agreed after the summit. That's, these aren't small incremental changes. This is, these are huge changes for our kids, and the importance of that. And the last question really, to me, captured the essence of what we are trying to do, which was, "I feel like my voice matters, and that elected officials respect my opinion." I was actually surprised at the beginning, data points, 67%. But look at the yellow. That's 100%. Every kid said, "I feel like my voice matters, and my opinions are respected." That's huge. That right there is transformational. It's exciting to see that we've tapped into something here. So, I'm sharing with you because we have a new summit coming up. And it's going to be a summit that'll be happening on March 16th. And this is a little end-of-the-day photo. Some of the electors had to leave, and they were missed out on some of this. But you can see, it was a really incredibly positive experience, not just for the students, but I think for the electors, because many of them come up to me and said, "I love it. When are you going to do it again?" So, I'm sure to share with you these positive outcomes and to tell you, I hope you can continue to endorse and support our efforts to really engage our youth, and to empower them to have a voice in our election process, to understand the importance of local government, and the importance of being able to make a difference in our community. So.
Thank you very much, Jesse. I know we have a couple of people in that photo who may want to share their experience a little bit about the summit as well. Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you for being here tonight and sharing the background on the program. I want to thank you for working with all the partners to pull it together. It was really uplifting. I mean, when Councilmember Rosco and I, we actually were paired up going from table to table, just the depth of the questions, the interest, the, the students did open up, I think, over time. They, like when we were at the third table, it was just very comfortable. And I want to thank my colleagues at Washington Unified School District also for participating. And when we got to the, I think, the River, there was one River City High School table. It was really passionate discussion. And I think they felt comfortable, they would feel comfortable contacting us after, and shared business cards and everything. So, thank you for providing that opportunity for us.
You're welcome.
I agree. I didn't know what to expect volunteering. I just know that I was going to say yes to kids regardless of how it went. And going in and seeing the diversity in the, in the students that were participating, many of whom were fully self-selected to participate, because they really wanted to navigate an unknown, you know, area. And, you know, granted, there are some that, you know, were really shy at first, and that they, I think we did see some transformation throughout our conversations. But I think what Councilmember Sandin mentioned, would really, really did, I agree, the depth of the concerns that we were hearing. I don't think that we would have probably been exposed to them before, if we didn't have that roundtable conversation. And for example, there were several students who were expressing concerns of the fact that they were going to graduate soon. And they were worried that their parents wouldn't be able to attend the graduation. So, automatically, we would probably think, "Well, is it financial? Is it lack of tickets? What is it?" No, we're afraid that immigration will come and take our parents away. These are concerns that we might not necessarily all be able to meet, but at least we have the ability to understand fully what our community is expressing. And so, we were very thankful to have that dialogue, to be able to see issues from the lens of young people, because we can't, we're not young people. We're not, we're not able to take in every single experience. But we're grateful for the opportunity to at least expand our understanding and be able to act upon what we learn. I would love for the opportunity to have, yes, in the West Sacramento community, if we could organize that. I mean, proximity will determine a lot of the participation. But wouldn't it be great if we could have a roving
if we didn't have that roundtable conversation. And for example, there were several students who were expressing concerns of the fact that they were going to graduate soon. And they were worried that their parents wouldn't be able to attend the graduation. So, automatically, we would probably think, well, is it financial? Is it lack of tickets? What is it? No, we're afraid that immigration will come and take our parents away. These are concerns that we might not necessarily all be able to meet. But at least, we have the ability to understand fully what our community is expressing. And so, we were very thankful to have that dialogue, to be able to see issues from the lens of young people. Because we can't, we're not young people. We're not, we're not able to take in every single experience. But we're grateful for the opportunity to at least expand our understanding and be able to act upon what we learn. I would love for the opportunity to have, yes, in the West Sacramento community, if we could organize that. I mean, proximity will determine a lot of the participation. But wouldn't it be great if we could have a roving summit? You know, so that way, you know, we could bring kids outside of the area into West Sacramento and see what we have to offer here, too. And, you know, talk about some of the opportunities we have here at the community college as well. But again, Jesse, thank you so much for being the, you know, the impetus behind this fantastic program. I look forward to seeing it expand. I look forward to participating along with my colleagues in the future. And I look forward to seeing the futures of these children who are participating.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. One of the things I'd like to thank, too, is the school district was fantastic. They provided transportation for the kids, and that made a big difference. So, we had a chance. And as it grows, quite frankly, I can see us, I think there's so much value to even hearing from different communities. One of the things we found out in talking to the kids from that experience afterwards and really sitting down with them, is they said, you know what they really enjoyed as well? Is being able to hear what are issues that are happening in other communities. Because they learned quite a bit of things that they didn't know. You know, they're focused on their particular community. And to hear things that were different, but how much is the same? And it was just neat to hear these young folks really understand that person, process of, you know, understanding that the differences that exist, but still the similarities of some of the same challenges communities are struggling with. And so, it was really, I'd like to see if we can continue to grow it. My sense is, it'll probably grow beyond the existing location if it continues to grow. Because I, I think we've just tapped, begun to tap into something that I think is special and hopefully can really make a difference moving forward. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Jesse. And behalf of the council, thank you as well for your personal commitment and partnership to West Sacramento and to the school. I think I can speak on behalf of the school district. Our trustee colleagues are in the back nodding their head, so I got their affirmative. Thank you for your partnership and caring for our youth and finding ways to engage with them. But also, thank you for your engagement and your role. I know we just finished the election cycle. And you have been very proactive in coming and giving us updates and talking about these issues in addition to sort of the nuts and bolts of what you do. So, I just want to say thank you for your partnership and your commitment. You come to our events, you're here in West Sacramento. And we see you all the time. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate your partnership.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I know they're going to get up and leave. But I just want to say thank you to our school board trustees. We're about to get to the fun part, you know that. But no, thank you guys for all being here today and supporting our youth and supporting all the programs, and for your partnership as well on all these. We have three agenda items, all on kids. And we're doing it all with you. So, thank you for your continued leadership, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. All right, moving on. We're on to the consent agenda. And, oh my goodness, my, just a second. We're on to the consent agenda and items five through 13. We have one request to speak on item 12. And other than that, do any councilmembers have any items you want to pull?
11 and 12.
11 and 12. Any others? Okay. First up is item 11, which is consideration of the proposed outcomes and indicators for the first base programs of the West Sacramento home run. You have a question? Somebody want to?
Mr. Winrock, do you mind?
Ian, do you want to? We have questions on item 11?
Thank you. I have more of a comment, and that is to thank you for all of your work on the home run, on all of the home run portions that we've talked about tonight and all through it. You've, you have taken this on and made a tremendous impact, even in the short period of time. What we heard tonight in the, in the first few items is just what we, what we dreamed of. I think when we were thinking about what this could be, I think you've helped us realize it. And I just wanted to take a moment, I know these items are yours as well. I wanted to thank you for your work.
I would echo that, Ian. This has been tremendous work. I know you did a lot of work on these two items, which are in the consent agenda. But the outcomes that we are most visible are seeing what we saw tonight from the internship program that we have, and seeing our partners across the street who come over here and attest to the great success of these programs. So, thank you very much for all your work on this. You've done tremendous amount of work, as Councilmember Sandin said, is bringing these to life. This started out as a dream, that went to a kind of a framework, which went to the ballot and got backing. And now, we're seeing the real fruits of this. So, I just want to say thank you for all your commitment, all your hard work on this.
And not to reiterate what everybody else said, but we are going to miss you, Ian. I think that every investment that you have put into this, our home run, is going to be a long-lasting legacy for the kids in West Sacramento. I am so impressed with your intellect and your commitment to this program. And I look forward to seeing it come to fruition over the years. And I just really appreciate everything you've put in.
Mr. Mayor Protam?
Yes.
If we could, Ian's supervisor would like to echo that, please.
Yes.
I would just like to echo the comments of the councilmembers. Ian, it's been such a pleasure to work with you. You are not only an amazing employee, but you are just a great person to, to work with. And everything that they said is, is true. You've just done such a great job with this program, taking it from the framework and building it out and adding so much value and doing it basically, single-handedly. And I'm so proud of you. And I'm really sad that we're not going to be able to work together after the next couple of weeks. But wish you all the best, and thank you so much.
And I fifth all of that. I know he has one more meeting. But really, everything you heard tonight on the home run program, I've kind of been observing from my seat. And it's, it's been a lot of work by Ian to keep it all together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ian, you have anything to say, or? Yeah, I've never seen you tongue-tied like this before, to be honest.
I just say thank you all. And it's, it's in no small part, thanks to the amazing staff that are here at City Hall. So, it's definitely not one single program manager. It's due in large part to the established staff that have been here with the city for years, if not decades.
Yes. And I know if the mayor were here, he would thank you as well. I know he's worked very closely with you on implementing the home run. So, just thank you again. I know we have one item, request to speak, Chris White. And this is on item 12, to be technically correct.
Kind of the same thing, you guys just stole my thunder. So, see, in that list of, you know, Chris Warden started by saying it was like an Academy Award speech, a list of thank yous. And you always forget somebody important. And I was going to tell you, we forgot my mom. But it's actually Ian. And as you have all mentioned, he took this idea from when it was kind of rolling around the back of people's heads. He was there the first time that the business community had a meeting to feel out the idea. He was there creating the partnerships, meeting with the school district, meeting with businesses, convincing me to take on a high school student and telling me why this was a good idea in my business. He was there forming those first contracts with the organizations that did digital badging. And again, explaining to me why I needed it and why I cared about digital badging. And creating all of the legal structures that had to be done so that businesses like mine could bring in a temporary employee who was under the age of 18 for six weeks and let them work. He's the one who made this work. At the end of that first year, and this was our third year of having interns, the end of that first year, we took that high school student who had only worked, who had only done schoolwork and said the most valuable thing that he learned over the summer was that people in the real world would not give him assignments. He was expected to figure out how to work on his own, how to manage his own time and do things. And when I think about what that school student learned, and the way that Ian not only had to manage his own time, but he had to invent a program from scratch, put it all together and wrap it up in a bow, and then handed it over to us to all make successful. I can't imagine what it's like for him to leave his program and to know that someone else is going to have to shepherd it forward from this point and watch it grow. But I imagine that Ian's going to be looking. And I imagine that Ian's going to take everything that he heard, he learned here and apply it to his new position at the University of Oregon. Well, he'll help them be successful as well. So, I just wanted to say thank you from the business community.
Thank you, Ian. All right. If there's no other questions or actions or comments on the consent agenda, looking for a motion?
I'll move the recommended action. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda passed. Thank you very much. Thank you again, school board trustees. Good to see you. Onto item 14, which is public hearing and consideration of resolution 18-76, establishing community facility District S, calling an election to submit to qualified electors the proposals of levying a special tax and establishing appropriation summit for the district, and resolution 1885 declaring the results of the special election.
Yeah.
That's a mouthful.
I will keep my, my comments brief tonight. Just back in October, we started the process of forming the Port Town Maintenance CFD. And tonight's a major step towards getting that district formed. So, just to recap, Port Town's a 132-unit proposed subdivision in Southport on about 12.8 acres. And there are a number of maintenance items that have been assigned to the city in their subdivision map. And so, the CFDS is intended to, to provide funding towards the street lighting and some storm drain improvements. And so, in tonight's action, you're going to kind of do two things. Number one is to approve the resolution of formation, which is 1876, and set the date and time of the election, which would be at tonight's meeting. So, we would follow up with resolution 1885, which would contain the result of the election. And so, the election process does get foreshortened through a waiver and consent process, where you just have one property owner who signs the ballot. And so, before you, you have the results of the election and a substitute resolution 1885, which shows that the 13 votes were in favor of formation of the district. And so, all I'd ask is, before you consider an action on those items, the MELA-RUS Act requires that we have a public hearing. So, we'll do that and, and then request that you take the action.
Thank you very much, Paul. So, yes, this is a public, this requires a public hearing. So, unless there's any questions or comments? Yes, there is a question.
I just have one question. These exist in all of our new, newest subdivisions. This?
That's correct. We have 15 of them right now, and this will be the 16th.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so there's no other questions. I'm going to open a public hearing. All those that wish to speak on this item are now encouraged to do so. If anybody would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, that closed the public hearing. Bring it back to the council for any comments, questions, or motions.
Do we do these items, take them up separately?
I was going to ask the same thing. Do we need to take them separately?
You can take them together in one action.
Okay.
Okay. And was this the one where we had?
This was, yeah, this is a memorandum for, with the ballot.
Yes.
And with the substitute resolution 188-85.
Okay. So, is that a motion?
I'll, I'll move the action, recommended action.
I'll second.
Anybody have a motion and a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item 15, public hearing and consideration of the first reading of ordinance 18-14 levying and apportioning the special tax in the, in Community Facility District S.
Yeah.
Back to you, Paul.
Pursuant to the approval of resolution 1885, we're asking that the city council conduct a first hearing, first reading of the ordinance 1814. And so, again, MELA-RUS Act requires a public hearing. So, before you enter that first reading into the record, we'd request that you have a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and open up a public hearing. Anybody who'd like to speak on this item? This is a public hearing, and feel free to come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the council. Okay, just making sure. So, somebody get up. You're good, right? Okay. Public hearing's closed. So, back to the council for any comments, questions, or motions. You have a question? No questions? Looking for a motion?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, you have a motion and a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item 16, which is, this is a real mouthful. Consideration of City Council Resolution 1869 approving a property acquisition agreement, a memorandum of understanding, which replaces the master agreement with the state of California for the California Indian Heritage Center and a termination agreement terminating the original master agreement, and Amendment 1 and successor agency, Resolution 1884 approving the termination agreement. Charlene?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Protam Ledesma, and members of the city council. Get this up just a little bit. So, it's been many years since we've been working on this. The vision of the California Indian Heritage Center Museum and the transfer of the city and former redevelopment agency property to accommodate that vision has had to overcome many hurdles. The original agreement was originally entered into with the redevelopment agency back in 2008. Since that time, there have been many challenges. There have been changes in flood control regulations at the state level. There has been a major economic downturn. And in 2012, there was also the elimination of the redevelopment agency, which held title to the property. So, despite all those challenges, though, both the city and the state of California continue to try to find ways to overcome those hurdles and complete the process, which is the transfer of the property, so that the project could move forward. For those who may not be familiar with the property, or just to remind them, this is an exhibit that's contained in the agenda report. It's attachment number one. This shows the property that is subject to the agreements and the transfer. So, these are all the various parcels. And this is the actual outline of the 43 acres, also known as the East Riverfront property. Now, that's the property that the city is transferring to the state of California. The state of California, their project description also includes property that is to the west of that. And in the agreements, it's also referred to as the JTS parcel. And so, if you follow the map mouse here, that is this parcel here to the west. So, that's the JTS. But everything highlighted with the yellow boundary is the limits of the proper, of the project. And so, the project, this is also from the state of California, California Indian Heritage Center general plan and their EIR that was certified back in 2011. And so, this shows the concept that is the preferred alternative. And the state is continuing to work off of that basis. So, there, there has not been any changes to date to the, the project concept. So, tonight, the agreements before you, which are the property acquisition agreement, the termination agreement, and the memorandum of understanding, all of those reflect the city's and the state's original intent, going back to 2008. There have been some changes to reflect more modern agreement templates and practices by both, by both agencies. Some of the original terms, such as the reversionary clause that the redevelopment agency and the city had insisted upon early on, those have been removed, given that the state now has approved $100 million in a budget appropriation for the project. And that removed a lot of the uncertainty that existed back in 2008, 2014, even prior to this year. And the, there are a couple of terms that have existed in the agreement since 2008. And there's been some significant changes there. And those are that the state has now agreed to fund and construct the bike, the bike path and the riverfront pedestrian path in Phase 1 of the project. That is something we did not have before. So, after 10 years of dedicated work, both city, state, and state park staff, as well as the State Department of General Services and the State Department of Finance are all, have come to an agreement on these agreements. to occur that helped really get us to where we're at today. And the staff team, the city manager, the city attorney, and myself, we pretty much just helped wrap up the agreements and get them before you this evening. So, city staff hereby recommends approval of the actions as noted in the agenda report. And the next step would be for these agreements to go to the State Public Works Board, and that is being scheduled for next Friday, December fourteenth. And the city manager and I both plan to attend. And with that, I will conclude my presentation and return it back to the City Council.
Thank you, Charlene. Any questions from council at this point?
I guess my only question in the, thank you for that. I know this has been a long time in coming and lots of hard work by you and a number of folks, and I even sat on a community advisory board for several years. I can't even remember the year because it's been so long. But I note in the staff report that should the state have any substantive changes, that it would, it could return or would return to us. That's-
That is correct.
Okay.
Both resolutions contain language that says that the agreements can only be executed in substantially the form as presented to you tonight.
Great.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandin, for pointing that out. It's an important point because, well, first of all, thank you, Charlene. This is a huge endeavor, a moment for us to finally get these agreements through us. And you're right, it was ten years ago, just over, I think, when we started these, this process, and being on the planning commission at the time, we started hearing about it. We knew council was working on it. And then, you're right, just sort of floated along and was in limbo for a number of years as we all recovered from the recession and, and changes in administrations. We always, this community always had its heart set on it in, in some way, and this, this agreement shows, I think, the state listened to us in terms of the work we've done over the past few years, not just this council, but as Councilmember Sandin pointed out, the community did. And then, we had community members, part of the original project team, who gave their feedback on, around what this would be and how the impacts would be in our community, and making sure we cared for it all and the agreement that we had, and kind of persevered, showed that. But it also showed the state really listening to us still even further. The agreement to fund the bike trail through the property was hugely important to us as we continue approving trails and being able to continue to move them going northward, so that even with the new grant money that will provide an extension north, this will continue it on through this great property that will be improved for, as part of the Indian Heritage Center and up through the Broderick and Bright neighborhood. So, it's hugely impactful to the neighborhoods, to us, and to the region. When we get past this, it was, we, having this center on the riverfront in this spot did a lot of things for us as a community ten years ago, but we now have a riverfront, or part of a riverfront, that will have this on our side of the river, this hugely important heritage, Indian Heritage Center on our side of the river. Across the way, we'll have the Powerhouse Science Center that's now under construction. We have the already very popular railroad museum on their side of the river, and all the other amenities that are along our side of the river, the barn, the Rayleigh Field, and our trail, and the Sacramento, it's just continuing to improve the riverfront, and, which is hugely important to all of us and to the region. So, and mostly to this, I know the mayor played a huge role in this. He, he, he really did. He called in and to get the right meetings and made sure that we were represented and our interests were represented. So, I know he can't be here today, but thanks to Mayor Cabaldon because he really went to bat on this one, and to get the right deal. And also, thanks to Governor Brown. This all got really kick-started to Governor Brown when he passed his budget and won and funded this, and now this is backed up by a hundred million dollars that's in the state budget, and kind of kicked-started their staff to let's get this done. And so, I know Governor Brown is probably watching tonight as he does all our meetings, but I think it'd be appropriate for us to send a letter of thanks to the governor once this agreement passes through their body next week, and thank him for kick-starting this, because this would be a huge benefit to, to not just our community, but to the entire state, and so, thanks to him. But Charlene, thank you for all your work on this. This, I know this has been a huge labor for you and for the staff. Thank you for persevering. Jeff, thank you for all your work on this as well, and so, really great outcome.
And I think when that hundred million dollars got announced, just because this has been so long in coming, and I did a happy dance. I could actually see it hap, I could see it being realized, and I just imagine, after the project's completed, I imagine children visiting the center. I mean, this is, this will be such a huge addition to our city, to actually, you know, to have the center here, and I'm beyond thrilled.
I, I wasn't going to say anything, but what Councilmember Sandin just said really did cause me to reflect upon when I did my master's degree. I did my field work on the Navajo Reservation for a couple of weeks at a time, and there were so many things that had been isolated to just the reservation that so many people on the outside would never have understood, and I could never fully understand, only in my limited time there. Just recently, you know, local schools go through the opportunity to give third graders, you know, experience some, you know, studying Native American tribes and understanding to a limited level, right? But I was proud that my son had the Navajo Reservation, so I was, you know, I could participate and I could share my pictures and whatnot. But there are so many things, even, I mean, if we could just even isolate it to the California reservations and Native American history in our, in our state alone, there's just so much to learn, even, you know, that alone. And I'm really excited. I'm really excited for the kids. I mean, tonight, it seems like we're just celebrating every educational opportunity and development for children, but what a wonderful tribute to this entire agenda tonight is to end it like this. So, thank you, Charlene. I wasn't here ten years ago to know the labors that you put in, but I can see it in my colleague's eyes, and I know from the community that there's so much excitement around this project, so, we appreciate it very much, and I appreciate it on behalf of all the kids and the future generations who are going to enjoy that.
I don't think this requires a public hearing. I don't believe.
It does not.
Okay.
But I would suggest that this should be done in two actions. The first, the successor agency action, which is recommended action number one, and then, second, the council actions.
So, we'll take two votes on those items?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, council. So, so, council, if you can-
I'll move action number one, under the recommended actions.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on item one of the recommendations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
I will move the recommended actions two through five.
I will second.
Okay. We have another motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Both motions carry. Thank you again, Charlene. Terrific work, all the staff, and again, once we get past next week, we can work with the mayor and to get the right letters of thanks out on this. Thank you. I think that brings us to the end of our regular agenda. Moving on to city ban, council calendar, I'm sorry.
Good evening. A couple of items that are coming up in the next couple of weeks. You have, the police department has, tomorrow night has their annual employees' recognition ceremony, and that's at five thirty in the Galleria. And then, next week, the PD is doing their annual toy drive wrapping day. That's over at the police department. That's from nine to four P.M. And then, on Saturday, December fifteenth, they're doing their, their annual shop with the cop. And that's it.
Thank you. City manager report? Can I stop and make a comment on the calendar? I'm sorry. I just want, a, thanks, city staff. I didn't mention on the council communication, item on your November calendar, which is the last item, which was, I attended a meeting with Santa Claus at the, in front of the City Hall, and as did Councilmembers Sandin and Roscoe. But thank you for all your work on the event with the chamber last week, but also to all the city staff, police department, fire department, everyone that's, I look into the calendar and all the events that you all are doing to support our community and those in need. I just want to say thank you, and to the public that's listening to the dates, please pay attention, try to support those efforts to help give back to the community at this time of need and time of giving, so, just want to say thank you for that. Onto the city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. And on that last item, that's quite a production. Public safety departments play a key role. It's really the parks staff decorating the tree, making all the magic happen in the street, so, I know they appreciate that comment, so, thanks. I was just going to follow up on one item from the last meeting. The winter warming center has kicked off over the weekend, and reporting from the homeless coordinator, it's going well. The coordination is there. There are several properties that are participating. His direct referrals are working well. There's up to ten people per night thus far, so, everything's going seamlessly there, working with Mark Sawyer's existing caseload. Similarly, Councilmember Roscoe mentioned downtown streets. The only thing they had there is we, there has been one person successfully housed through that program, so that's another success to report from the homeless coordinator. So, just, just a couple of updates. And then, the last item related to that is the next point in time count. I was just informed it's scheduled for January twenty-third, so, we'll have updated numbers after the new year, so, thank you.
Thank you. City attorney report?
Attorney report.
Staff direction, council?
I don't have staff direction, but can I make a quick announcement?
Sure. We'll go back to the council calendar.
Thank you. It would be a reflection of the council calendar. I just wanted to invite the community out on Sunday at the Collings Teen Center at four thirty P.M. A group of children will be making care packages for people in our community in need, including members of the Collings Teen Center, the Downtown Streets team, the Mercy Coalition, who is running our winter warming shelter, as well as the Yolo County Children's Alliance, as well as campfire victims. So, it's a community-wide event, and anyone and everyone is invited to attend, and they can help kids in our community learn how to give, do community service in a kid-friendly environment.
Thank you, councilmember. Item E, any future agenda item requests received, none? So, with that, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Move the second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.